We get started, ladies?
I call to order the Newman City Council Regular Meeting, August 20. For the pledge allegiance and remain same for the.
Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic of gorgeous states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, I come with a heavy heart, thinking about our country and the disasters that are happening all around. But we're here tonight to do the service and work for the city. But let's keep in mind those people that have been taken by the disasters and pray that our Father in heaven will keep His covered over this city and allow us to continue to grow. In His name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call? Councilmember McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Ball?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Mayor Graham?
Item five, any declarations of conflicts of interest tonight? Item six, ceremonial matters, none. Item number seven, items from the public, non-agenda items. Good evening.
Go on, step up to the mic and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Pat Portwood, and I am representing the Stanislaus Library Foundation. And we thank you for this opportunity tonight, Susan, my partner and I, to tell you a little bit about the libraries, of which some of it you probably know, but it's to remind you and so that you can share with constituents and keep supporting libraries. Okay. Our Library Foundation works to support the Stanislaus Libraries through fundraising and advocacy. Susan Thomas and I are here today to share with you the depth and breadth of services provided by the county library, with a focus on your local branch here in Newman. Did you know that the library has a lot of programs for families of young children? If you have young children, you probably know. If you have grandchildren, you may know. But these programs include Storytimes for preschoolers, during which young children are introduced to the magic of books. The staff members who conduct these sessions are all trained in child literacy development. Sometimes people forget that. So they know exactly what little ones need, including songs, games, and finger plays. This is a popular program at all of our library branches. Parents and caregivers can check out a Read to Me kits that contain four to six books, a puppet, a prop, a music, CD, a bilingual finger play booklet, and a bilingual school readiness tip. Kids are available in English and Spanish. Schools throughout the Central Valley place a high priority on helping the young English learners with reading and academics. These kits are a way that the families can get involved in helping their children at home. So another program, which we totally support, is a thousand books before kindergarten. And you say, how is that possible? Well, if you read the same book a thousand times over, it is possible. So this free program is for infants, toddlers, and preschool, encouraging the caregivers to read a thousand books to their little ones before they start kindergarten. A goal that experts say children need to help them learn to read. And as a prior education person, I could always tell who had done the thousand books before kindergarten. It's real easy to see. For families with older children, we have programs that include, and you may have heard about it, the summer reading program. This is a very big deal in our libraries during the summer because, you know, the summer brain drain that happens for kids. So we also have coding classes and general computer availability and online resources. This summer reading program has just now come to an end, but we had a total of 82 participants right here in Newman. And that's fantastic. That's kids who did reading all through the summer. They count their pages. There's a whole system for it, rewards, et cetera. Some teens do their homework after school in the libraries. You might know that. And very soon, we're going to have STEM kits. I think you've probably heard a lot about that from education. That's the science, technology, engineering, and math that will be available for families to check out, with activities. They can do their little experiments, et cetera, at home with their family, all together. There's another popular program called the Teen Book Box. If you have teens or grandchildren that are teens, each box is, and this free teen subscription program contains a handpicked reading recommendation based on the teens' preferences. The box also includes treats and swag, of course. Teens can register each month for another exciting box to be picked up at the Stanislaus County Library of their choosing. So we want to really thank you for this opportunity. We commend the work of your librarian, Veronica. I know she comes here sometimes. We talk to her. We are very proud of all the work being done at the Newman Library, and we hope you will continue to support. And now, my partner, Susan, will talk a little bit more about what we offer. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Hi, good evening. I'm Susan Thomas. I'm the president of the Stanislaus Library Foundation. So after listening to Pat, you might be thinking that we only have programs for children. But of course, that's not true. In reality, our system provides for the full spectrum of lifelong learning for the entire community, from Newman to Keys and Turlock to Neher, Houston, Oakdale, Waterford, Modesto, all of our branches, all of the programs are available to everyone. With so much, can I, just need to adjust a minute. With so much of our lives requiring computers and internet access, it's really important to the community that people can use the library computers and Wi-Fi. People use these computers all the time to fill out job applications, to do research for school reports, to access services, print out documents, all kinds of things. Now, we have home, they call connectivity kits available, including here in Newman, which include a Chromebook, a mouse, a Wi-Fi hotspot, and a set of headphones. And these can be checked out so that people can access the internet and work on a computer at home. For people who have their own devices, they can just check out a mobile hotspot if they don't have internet. And COVID and with the children trying to do school online, we really brought into focus that not all families have equal access to the internet. So this is a way the libraries are really trying to help with that situation. One of the programs that's available to older library users is the Home Delivery Program. Because some county residents are homebound and they're not able to get to the library, volunteers in this Home Delivery Program check out the books based on what the customers ask for, and they deliver it to the home and come back and pick it up later. And again, with the recent COVID situation, this program became even more crucial. Veterans have access to the Veterans Resource Center. Military personnel, veterans, and their families can find information regarding benefits, housing, education, employment, and healthcare at this center. Book clubs can borrow multiple copies of books, often with a large print or a CD edition available, to read and discuss together without having the expense of having to go and buy all those books. And it's called Book Club in a Box, and it includes discussion questions for the book club to talk over. Some of our libraries provide passport application services where customers can get face-to-face assistance from a knowledgeable person by appointment without having to spend hours in line or on the phone. Beginning last May, the Stanislaus County Libraries, including Newman, began having California State Park passes available to check out for two weeks at a time. These State Park passes allow one vehicle free entrance into any of the 200 state parks throughout California. The library's always been a great place to access the greater world through books, but these make it a great, give a great opportunity for people to access the greater world of nature as well. It's so important to remember that libraries are not just nice places where you can get free books, but they can really act as an anchor in a community. An example of this was in Newman, where there was this back-to-school water party. Many of you may already know about it. It was a huge success with over 65 community patrons attending. I want to mention the Friends of the Newman Library. This is an all-volunteer group that's dedicated to promoting public awareness of the Newman Library and its importance in our community. So the Stanislaus Library Foundation that we represent supports all of the 13 branches, but you've got this Newman's Friends Group really just here for Newman. They give the community an opportunity to invest in the success of the library by donating funds or volunteering. They encourage and support literacy. They strive to give children an educational head start through the love of reading and foster lifelong learning for children and adults. This group is currently searching for new members. So if you know of anyone who loves the library and would like to support the Newman Library, we're going to be giving a written version of our comments, and I've included in that the contact information for someone from the Friends of the Newman Library. So if you have anybody in mind, that's who we can get in touch with. It's Debbie Allen. In closing, you can see where Stanislaus County, Stanislaus Library Foundation is excited about everything our system has to offer, especially here in Newman, and why we are eager to support it in any way we can. We want to spread the word, and we're happy to be here to do that today, and we are hoping that you will spread the word in your community. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I say something? Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, I'd like to thank you guys for coming out. You know, the Newman Library has a lot of great events and programs, and they're very involved, and they're regularly here letting us know what's going on. I think it's really great to help out and give the kids something to do. So thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on that. We are so grateful that we do have a library here because it has been a great impact in terms of our kids. We don't have a whole lot of things to do for our kids, but that's one place where they will hang out during the summer is the library. So we're very grateful for you all and your participation in terms of Newman. So thank you so much.
Will you be having a booth this year at the Fall Festival here in September? Do you know anything about that?
I don't think that we have plans for that.
Oh.
Now, maybe the Friends of the Newman Library might.
Maybe so. I was just wondering. Okay.
But more people can have visibility.
Oh, yeah. I understand. Mm-hmm.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, the contact information for Debbie Allen is here in our, would I move those to you?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. We'll move on to item number eight, Consent Calendar. A, waive all readings of ordinance and resolutions except by title. B, approval of warrants. C, approval of minutes of the August 9, 2022 meeting. D, approval of formal response to civil grand jury case number 22-05GJ homelessness. E, adopt resolution 2022, next number, resolution approving a final map for 1035 T Street subdivision.
I move that we accept the consent calendar for.
I'll second. We have a first and a second. Go ahead and place your votes. Motion carries four zero. Item number nine, public hearings are none tonight. Item number 10, adopt resolution 2022, next number, resolution accepting bid and awarding contract to Rolfe Construction Incorporated for the Prince Road Sanitary Relief Sewer Project, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city of Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The item before you is the result of studying our sewer system on Prince and basically going from the shopping center across the highway and then going over to Merced, where there are several smaller-sized pipes that limit the capacity. And so this project is going to relieve some of those capacity issues and then also help accommodate the two developments that are going to be happening very soon, which one is under construction now, which is Mountous Ranch, and then the other is Caton Ranch that will be coming in the future. And this will also alleviate some of our existing capacity problems that don't have anything to do with new building. We put the project out to bid and advertised it starting July 6. We opened bids publicly August 2 here in City Hall. We received a total of two bids. The engineer's estimate was $1,076,218, and we had a responsive low bid from Rolfe Construction of $1,049,529. This project is going to be funded using the sewer fund, our capital improvement fund. And we would, I'll take any questions, but we recommend approving this bid, and we'll give Rolfe Construction a notice to award, and the city manager will execute an agreement with them to do this work.
And any questions? All right. No, maybe in the audience, I'll bring it back to council for action.
I move to adopt resolution number 2022, resolution accepting bid and awarding contract to Rolfe Construction Incorporated for the Prince Road Sanitary Relief Sewer Project, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city of Newman.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Go on, go online. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Motion carries four zero. Item number 10B, report on fall farmers market events and downtown plaza. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. I almost said good morning. We're back at it again with the Fall Festival. The Newman Chamber has requested the use of the Newman Downtown Plaza in the 1400 block of Main Street for seven consecutive Fridays in the month of September and October, starting September 16 and ending October 28. No alcohol will be allowed to vent or be consumed at this event. A DJ or entertainment will be provided. The organizer has made the following requests: exclusive use of the Newman Downtown Plaza. They would like to waive the standards for downtown events and for cleanup and deposits. The insurance reduced to $1 million, and also naming the city as an additional insured. The traffic and crowd controls that are listed in the standards, and also the electrical and the restroom fee waived. And it's all for the general farmer's market that we usually have in the spring. It's the same exact thing, but now in the fall. With that, I can answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions? All right, I'll bring it back to council for action.
I would like to move report on fall farmers market events at the downtown plaza.
Second.
First and second, accepting it. Go on, vote.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Motion carries four zero. Item number 10C, adopt resolution 2022, next number, resolution for the city council of the city of Newman, providing for the appointment to the offices of the city of Newman that were to be elected on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, and counseling the said election.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you're aware, the city currently has three offices scheduled for election on the November 8 consolidated, excuse me, municipal election. The three aforementioned offices include Mayor Casey Graham's seat, Councilmember Scott Ball's seat, and former councilmember Nick Candia's vacant seat. Pursuant to Elections Code 12-101, the city published public notices about the upcoming election in the Westside Index on July 6 and July 13. The notices provided information about how and when interested persons could secure and file nomination papers for the aforementioned seats. The notice of election also provided that if no one or only one person was nominated for any office, they may be appointed pursuant to Elections Code 102-29. As of close of the nomination period, we only had three individuals file for the three, the necessary nomination papers for the three offices slated for election. Those individuals and offices are Casey Graham for mayor, and Scott Ball and Shane Tomlinson for the two council member seats. Per Elections Code 10-229, the city published a public notice containing a certificate of facts in the Modesto B on August 18. The certificate of facts certified that the number of nominees for the office of mayor and council member did not exceed the offices to be filled at the election, and indicated that the city council could appoint the uncontested candidates tonight, at tonight's council meeting. Since the certificate of facts has been published for the five days, the city council may choose to make appointments tonight, or alternatively, direct the election to be held. If no person has been appointed to the office by Thursday, the 25th, the city will be required to hold an election. Staff estimates that the city could save approximately $15,000 by appointing the uncontested candidates and canceling the election. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution number 2022, next number, appointing Casey Graham as mayor, Scott Ball, and Gary Shane Tomlinson as city council members to serve exactly as if elected at the November 8, 2022 election, pursuant to Elections Code Section 10222, excuse me, 10-229, and cancel the aforementioned elections. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mike? Okay, go ahead. Just for clarification, I just want to make sure that it's known and understood. There was no competition because there was two open councilman seats. Only two people applied for the position. There was only one open mayor seat, and only myself applied for that, meaning there would be no need for an election because they would automatically win those seats outright without any campaigning or election needed. And that, by eliminating this, by doing it this way, we eliminate filing the paperwork to have to pay and paying $15,000 for, to get on the ballots. That's unnecessary.
That is correct. So we're basically, this is, at this point, is a foregone conclusion because there are only three candidates for the three seats, and we would be saving that money that we normally pay to Stanislaus County to conduct that election for us.
I do. All right. Thank you, Mike. I'll bring it back to council for action.
Well, I like that. I'd like to move to adopt resolution number 2022, the resolution of the city council of the city of Newman, providing the appointment of the offices of this city of Newman that were to be elected on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, and canceling said election.
We have a first. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Go on, vote. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Mike. Item number 11, item is from District 5, Stanislaus County Supervisor. He is not able to make it tonight. Item number 12, items from city manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor.
Michael.
And just elaborate a little bit further in consultation with our legal counsel tonight. The appointment of Mr. Tomlinson will occur in December, at the first meeting in December, which is generally when someone who's elected in November generally gets seated and takes their oath of office in December. So at the first meeting in December, Mr. Tomlinson will go through that process and be, take the oath of office and be seated as a sitting council member on the council at that point in time. So.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing that. I think, I think that's a very judicious way of going forward. I mean, obviously, these are uncontested races. One of the other things that permitted us to do that, there were no ballot measures, there was nothing else, other city business on the election, which allowed us to proceed forward with this. So I think, I think it's a prudent way of moving forward and saving the city, you know, $15,000 or so. So we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Today, I had a meeting with the school district, and we met with some developers that are trying, that are looking to annex land, which would be east of the railroad tracks and north of Sherman Parkway. It's called the Agrianna Project. So they originally had intended not to identify a school site. We didn't think that was prudent, so we wanted to get Superintendent Mr. Posey involved in the process. He came in and indicated, yeah, it's probably better that we do identify a site. So they're going to make some changes, and then they'll bring those changes, hopefully, in time to us that we can then present them to, at the two-plus-two meeting in September. So anyways, the whole, the whole idea was is, you know, getting the school involved in the planning process, just like we did in Northwest Newman. In Northwest Newman, they told us what they wanted. They wanted a 10-acre site, and this is kind of the width, length ratio that they wanted, and we're going to do the same thing with them, moving forward on that particular project. That project has a long ways to go, a lot of planning to go. They haven't even drafted a sequoia document yet. So telling them, you're proceeding at your own risk. You still have to go through Planning Commission and City Council for formal approval. So. We were, we were, we as a city were very fortunate that we secured a, you know, Catherine worked on this, we secured a $4 million grant. It's called the Land and Water Conservation Fund. The $4 million grant to build our nature park out on, by the news project. So that was the second project of which we would have got funding for. The grant was for $4 million. The original intent was we would use the news project as our match on there because it's quite a substantial match. It's a 50-50 match, meaning so a $4 million project, it's $2 million out of the city's pocket to build that project. Unfortunately, after they notify us of our being awarded or selected for an award, we also learned that the news wasn't going to necessarily qualify as our $2 million grant match. So Catherine and I are working really diligently right now, but we're going to ultimately have to come back to you and get your, and get your approval for moving forward. So we're trying to identify some other funding sources that might work as our match. Otherwise, you know, $2 million is a pretty big ask of a disadvantaged community of our size to put forward. So it's a great project. We still really believe in it. It's one of the, it'll be one of the longest accessible trails out in nature, you know, in this part of the state. It's a three-quarters of a mile, a mile round circle. I mean, it'd be a great place for people to go out and get exercise. There'll be playgrounds for the kids and all that. So we truly believe in the project. We're just not sure at this point in time that we're able to fund a $2 million match. So let Catherine and I continue to work forward. At some point in time, we're going to bring the council back into this when we have some good information for you to present to you, and then you can provide us guidance on what we want to do with this grant application here. So it's a little bit of good news and bad news, but we'll continue to work forward, and we really believe in this project. And so we'll do everything we can to try to figure out a way to secure the match on that one. So. I just kind of briefly mentioned it, but in September, we'll start back up with Mayor Pro Tim Ball and Councilmember McDonald as their members for the two-plus-two. That's on the third Tuesday, and we'll send you an email reminder the week before, and then generally, sometimes we even give you a call the morning of. So. And then, lastly, just wanted to let you know, and you can talk to Mayor a little bit about it, too, the Fall Festival is coming up. I want to wish everyone a great Fall Festival as we move forward. You are signed up to be in the parade. We did thank you, Chief Bowen. He was able to secure you a four-person gym vehicle to drive in the parade together. Ally will provide you some little treats that you guys can pass out as you go down the road. Generally, you'll meet at the fire department and then all travel over together from that point in time. So be similar to what happened last year. So if you have any questions, you can talk to the mayor. Ally will be there as well to help you coordinate with that. So that's all that I had, Mayor, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Yeah, quick question. With the, trying to get the matching funds for the, for that project you just talked about, you mentioned wetlands. Is that a part of that particular project?
The wetlands are not a part of that project. We have two other projects for which we're doing upper wetland restoration. I think it's called Upper Wetlands, right? And we're doing the news project, which are constructed wetlands. This particular phase of it does not have wetlands as a, as a part of this phase of the project. Two other phases, actually, three other phases will have wetlands involved.
Well, if we ever approach that, just, you know, keep in mind that state and federal dollars are available for those type of projects.
Yeah, and we've already received $7.5 million in state funding for the development of wetlands. So this, but unfortunately, this particular phase does not have it. So.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Michael. Ally? Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, once again. Just touching up on what Michael said, you will be receiving an email probably this Friday or Saturday. Check your emails. You'll have information regarding where your location will be and things of that nature regarding tickets and for the Fall Festival information. So check those out. I will also be reaching out to you guys shortly after. For me, Fall Festival, come visit us. We'll be at the Kid Zone. We'll be located near Catherine's Public Works booth. So we'll kind of all be in the same corner. We generally do the Kid Zone area Saturday and Sunday from 10 to 4 p.m. So if you guys are in the area, come on by, have children, grandchildren, bring them by and have them check out our location. Fall Festival's around the corner right after. So you're welcome to come on downtown and check us out. We should have an array of different vendors and booths this time around. So switching it up a little bit. it up a little bit, bringing in different people and different things to our community. And then soccer starts shortly after that, September sixteenth, I'm sorry, September seventeenth. No, I apologize. September tenth will be our first soccer day as well. So it's consecutive, one after the other. If you have a chance to come on out, stop by. The community always loves to see the members out there hanging out with us. With that, I can answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
Lieutenant?
Evening, Mayor, council members. As discussed, Fall Festival is less than two weeks away, and every police officer within the City of Newman will be working that event as always. Your weather for the parade looks to be around a hundred degrees, so hydrate for your ride down Main Street. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant. Lou?
Didn't have anything to report tonight.
It's always good.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Catherine?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really sad about that grant, so we're going to try to find a different type of funding we can use as match. We did get another notice today. They awarded the Rural Recreation and Tourism Grant that we also applied for, and we weren't selected for that one at all. We could have used that as a match, but we didn't get it. But if you don't apply, you can't get them at all. So there are some disappointments in this grant world. We are actively always looking for grants to fund this and other projects. We, news, we are going to open bid September thirteenth, so we'll see, hopefully we get good bids. We had a pre-bid meeting, and we had a lot of interest, so we'll see what kind of bids we get. Hopefully, it comes in low. I told them I wanted it all constructed for a dollar, and so hopefully somebody complies with that. And so you'll see some construction starting out there. And then all the other projects are going to be following right behind. And so I'll take any questions if you have any.
How about A M P M? Is that going to be done sooner than October, do you think? Because it seems like they're getting pretty close. What's?
I think there's probably going to be a lot of interior work once they get to a certain point, and so I expect October is probably a pretty realistic date.
Wonder if you can get gas cards there so you can have free car washes.
They need to do a membership.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you, Kathy. Is, one is that, there's a saying, you know, as Christians would say, you know, when one door closes, God will open many, many more doors. So that little grant may turn into a big grant for you.
Yeah.
You know, keep the course.
Oh, yeah.
Question came up, you know, in reference to flooding. You know that, you know, it's been all over the news that this flooding is happening, and now they're saying, even here in the valley, they're talking about it's the possibility of us having flooding. Are we prepared for such?
Well, Chief Bone can maybe expand on this a little bit because we are working on a mitigation plan, and flooding is mentioned. I will be doing outreach at the Fall Festival because there are about half the residents in town that live in a flood zone, and then we require certain construction to be elevated to protect them from flooding. Anybody that, because we're a CRS community, which is a community rated city, means FEMA will give anybody that lives in a flood zone discounts on their flood insurance. And so, and all the, and I send letters to our insurance agents here in town and to our realtors. And so for all the residents that live in town, come see me. I'll tell you if you're in a flood zone, and then talk to your insurance agent. You'll get a five percent discount because of the efforts that we do to make sure people are building flood-safe structures. That's why Taco Bell is two feet elevated above the crown of the road, because that protects that building, so water will just pass by it. So we are not, absolutely not safe from flooding. One of the main historical flooding issues is the Orstima Creek, and I guarantee everybody that sits up here and over there and all of our staff check that creek constantly because it has to do with the railroad trestle having debris pushed up against it with the first flush. And so if nobody cleans that, then the water needs to go somewhere, and it's going to find a weak point, and it makes a river right down the railroad tracks. And so that can cause flooding for Newman. And so there's some bigger projects in the works to try to prevent that type of flooding, to control that flow that goes down Orstima Creek. In the meantime, the county, C C I D, the all-city staff, we check that, and we have the railroad come out and clean it, and to make sure that we have water flow through there. So we try to have mitigation plans, and we try to be prepared. So it's all about being prepared for a flood, and there's things people can do even at home. Come see me at my booth, and I have lots of information on that to share with the public.
Well, I'm really glad that, you know, that you guys have this conscious thing in terms of the possibilities. You know, sometimes, let me say this, is that they say we have rain forecasts, and so I'll be in Modesto for a meeting, and it's just raining, raining, raining. I get back here to Newman, no rain. So I only say that to say this, is that I'm glad that you guys are conscious enough to say, well, hey, let's prepare ourselves. You know, it may not happen, but let's be prepared. And I'm really grateful for you guys' ability to, you know, just have the conscience in terms of looking out for the residents and the community.
And that's not to say, like I've been seeing on the news, if we get nine inches of rain in an hour, there's going to be no stopping it. Then it'll be recovery efforts and getting things cleaned up. And so we can't control that amount of water, no matter how well we're taking care of everything. But for historical flood events that we've had here and somewhat of preventative, we do take an active effort in that. And I don't know if Chief Bone wants to expand anything on our mitigation plans and efforts.
No, it's been addressed in our mitigation plan for sure, and I think, like you said, staff does maintain a conscious effort to keep us prepared for those events, and you may get occasional flash flood, even though, you know, we haven't seen something like that in a while. But for your big floods, you know, the river's empty right now, so it's going to take a lot of water to fill that up pretty quickly. But yeah, if you get local pooling, stuff like that, I think could be a factor bound. I don't know. Knock on wood, I think we're in a good place.
So the railroad track, is that like a berm for the east side of Newman? I mean, it won't flood past the railroad track on the east side? Because I don't think it's going to flood from the rivers to the west. So, because we already had that big flood, and that's where strippers were out in the farmers' fields. And was it back in ninety, two thousand four, I think it was?
No, it was ninety-five and ninety-eight is when Newman flooded, and that's because?
I was here when the big one hit too, and it crested over the whole Merced River. It went into the fields, even had river road and stuff blocked off.
So we have a couple of different issues that we have going on here. The biggest flooding threat to Newman is Orstima.
It's Orstima. Well, that's good. I'm away from that.
And so what happens is, in the two years, there were kind of two different floods, and I'm only know, I don't know this from experience, Councilmember Ball and Mr. Meyer do. There are two different experiences because, one, the first one, really that trussel got backed up, the water came over that, and then we're downstream. So Inyo and Canal and Highway thirty-three is kind of the bathtub drain. That's the low point. So that's where all the water goes. So the slowly crawled, crawled down from Orstima Creek to that particular point, flooding everything along the way.
Well, that is on the east side of the river.
Right. The second flood, though, was, was, everything was inundated with water. It all flooded, and even the ground was so saturated, we started getting alluvial floodplain coming, and it even came down Stir Road and then over the bridge and crossed the canal and all that, and then just flooded from every, from every different direction. So there were two types of different events there. Most of it, though, came from the hills. And so, and it takes twenty-four hours for that event to happen, and then for all the water to actually get here. So with that being said, we've learned a lot from it. The trussel is one impediment that we're working on trying to fix, and maybe Northwest Newman can contribute to that as well, when we do have those particular big events. So it's going to be very challenging. The river does not necessarily pose a significant threat to us as a community. It mostly poses a threat to our wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
And so the other last one would be, and there's no water in it, would be dam failure over at San Luis. If that, we are in a flood inundation area. If that era was absolutely full and failed.
Really?
We, there would, there would be some impact to our community and definitely to our wastewater treatment plant.
They're raising that up as we speak, you know. They got the boat ramp closed off for ten or fifteen years now. I'm the only one on the side. You have to go to Dynastor Point, but they're, the camping, can't camp there no more, but they're, they're going to raise it up and make that reservoir bigger. So that's something to look into.
But you got to have rain to.
Yeah.
Actually fill it up.
We hope we get rain, for sure.
You know, that's an off creek, one of the only off creek reservoirs in our state, so you actually pump that water in there. So if we don't, if our drought situation doesn't change, it doesn't matter how high they build that thing. It's never.
That's good that we're a community of awareness and that we're conscious, because we have quite a few seniors here, and I, you know, constantly be on my mind in terms of making sure if any disaster hit this, this community, that we think of the seniors that can't get around too well.
Yeah. So I think, I think what we've learned is when there's a big event, and we track it in the hills now, because that's the big impact, right? We track it in there. Our officers, if the water starts getting up to a certain level, our officers are out checking it every hour to see where it's at. So we'll have time to, to, to address it as best we can, and maybe move people out of the hospital, the convalescent home, and some of those other things if it's going to occur. But we'll know about it because we have monitoring now on our computers, on our, on our smartphones. I know the police department goes out there all the time on big events just to see where it's at. So we're constantly aware of it. In fact, we'll have old mayors call us and tell us, hey, have you been out there? Check that out? Yeah. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a big event for us, Councilman McDonald. So.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is that all you had, Catherine?
That's all I got.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief Bone?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Just want to invite everyone to come visit us at the Fall Festival. We'll be on Fresno Street like every other year. We'll have a little obstacle course set up for the kids. We'll do some fire truck rides for those that are interested, and then we'll have plenty of information from, for everything you want to know, from CPR up to fire safety. So come visit us. We've had some pretty busy weeks. Still got dry grass out there, so just be cautious when using combustibles. I can answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Protemball?
Nothing tonight.
Councilman McDonald?
Bless the evening.
I have nothing.
All I have to say is enjoy Fall Festival. Have a good time. Act responsibly. And hopefully we have a good, good turnout. I think we will. Hopefully, it won't be too hot. All right. With that, I'll ask for adjournment.
I'll second that.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.